Settle down, we're about to begin. Everybody settle down. Good afternoon and welcome to the New York City Council hearing of the Committee on Higher Education. At this time, can everyone please silence your cell phones? If you wish to testify, please go up to the sergeant's desk to fill out a testimony slip. Written testimony can be emailed to testimony@council.nyc.gov. Again, that is testimony@council.nyc.gov. At this time and going forward, no one is to approach today's. Thank you for your cooperation, Chair. We are ready to begin.
Good afternoon. I am Councilmember Eric Dinowitz, Chair of the Committee on Higher Education and proud CUNY alum. Welcome to our oversight hearing on humanities as a viable academic path for CUNY students. Having graduated from the Bronx High School of Science, one might think it odd that I am championing the hearing today. Credit for that goes to the undergraduate professors at Binghamton, where I majored in political science and music. Now, political science is really one of the social sciences, not one of the humanities, but many believe that it has the same foundational elements as humanities courses. According to the National Humanity Center, those elements include thinking creatively and critically, as well as asking and investigating questions on a wide range of topics that affect how the human experience is understood and appreciated across cultures and communities, past and present. And then there's music, one of the fine and performing arts which are squarely in the center's definition of humanities, along with history, philosophy, religion, modern languages, and literature, including English, ancient languages and literatures, media studies, and cultural studies, including Black Studies, Women's Studies, and fields sometimes referred to as area studies, such as East Asian Studies. Columnist and editor Nicholas Goldberg wrote in the Los Angeles Times, "The humanities and social sciences help students and the adults they become maneuver through the complications and contradictions of the world," and that "learning languages, studying other countries, remembering history broaden perspectives and help us transcend global differences." So what could be more important than that? Well, as it turns out, perhaps, a lot of things. The number of students, well, it's kind of, I guess, a dark joke, because the number of students enrolled in the humanities is in freefall, according to scholars and researchers in the field. In the past decade, undergraduate enrollments in English and in history were down by one-third, and enrollment in the humanities overall was down by 17%. The number of graduating humanities majors has fallen eight years in a row by 2020, when only 4% of graduates majored in the humanities disciplines of English, history, philosophy, and foreign languages and literature. According to data collected by the Modern Language Association, 651 collegiate programs in languages other than English were closed between 2013 and 2016, and that trend has unfortunately continued as foreign language programs continue to take a short-sighted hit. How else are we going to get our students ready to relate to and work with the rest of the world? And in case you're worried that humanities graduates can't get jobs when they graduate or end up with very low salaries, neither turns out to be true, thankfully. Today's hearing topic came as a result of my staff's reading an article entitled "The Humanities Aren't Hurting Everywhere" by Karen Beck, Associate Dean of the School of Arts and Humanities at Lehman College in the Bronx in Council District 11. So, Dr. Beck, thanks for the push. We are looking forward to hearing about work being done at Lehman and also at LaGuardia Community College. We are pleased to welcome, as expert witnesses, Tamara Twiel, Program Director for Civic Initiatives at the Teagle Foundation, a longtime supporter of humanities and of CUNY, and Dr. Kelly Kreitz, an Associate Professor of English and Director of the Babbel Lab, a digital humanities center at Pace University. I want to acknowledge my colleague, Councilmember Oswald Felice, who is present today. I would also like to thank Adam Sarapoli, my Legislative Director, Jenna Klaus, my Chief of Staff, Christina Yelamati, the Committee's Counsel, Regina Paul, the Committee's Policy Analyst, Nia Hyatt, Committee's Senior Finance Analyst, and, on her last day of her internship in my office, Yaretsi Kanete, who is here with us in the chamber today. I would like to remind everyone who wishes to testify in person that you must fill out a witness slip, which is located on the desk of the Sergeant-at-Arms near the entrance of this room. Please fill out your slip, even if you've already registered to testify in advance. To allow as many people as possible to testify, public testimony will be limited to three minutes per person, and I'm going to ask my colleagues to limit their questions and comments to five minutes. Please note that witnesses who are here in person will testify before those who are on Zoom. And we all looked over as we can. Now, in accordance with the rules of the council, I will administer the affirmation to the witnesses from CUNY. Please raise your right hand. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this committee, and to respond honestly to Councilmember questions? Thank you. As a reminder to all witnesses, please state your name prior to your testimony for the record.
Anne Lopes. So, good afternoon, Chairperson Dinowitz, and members of the City Council Higher Education Committee. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you today about the current scope of humanities education at the university. So I am Anne Lopes, interim Senior University Dean for Graduate and Undergraduate Programming. I am joined today by my colleagues, Karen Beck, Associate Dean of the School of Arts and Humanities at Lehman College, and Dionne Miller, Associate Dean and Program Director for the Liberal Arts at LaGuardia Community College. Associate Dean, Karen Beck's recent article raises capacious questions about humanities education. Debates on the role of the humanities in higher education span the institution's history and have intensified with democratization, the need for an engaged citizenry, and the cost of education, labor market needs, and the rise of STEM. Through humanities courses, students learn to think critically, understand themselves, appreciate multiple perspectives, diverse cultures and people, apply problem-solving skills, communicate effectively, develop ethical reasoning, historical thinking, spur innovation and creativity, among other learning goals. The humanities have been a wellspring of learning for political leaders and activists, from FTR to Huey Newton to Sonia Sotomayor, and for business leaders and luminaries from Steve Jobs and Arundhati Batachira. CUNY's trained public leaders have cut some of their own intellectual and leadership teeth chewing on the ideas of the humanities. The scope of humanities education at CUNY. At CUNY, the humanities disciplines include English classics, creative writing, history, Judaic studies, modern languages, literature, linguistics, philosophy, religion, rhetoric, and related cross-disciplinary areas such as liberal studies and translation. CUNY offers 22 associates, 94 bachelors, 44 masters, and eight doctoral degrees in the humanities. Enrolled in these programs as of 2022 are over 17,745 students. Between 9 and 10% of bachelor students graduates graduate with humanities degrees. That's been consistent over the last five years. These figures do not reveal the broad reach of humanities training. Undergraduates can elect a humanities double major, minor, or concentration. All undergraduates take general education courses between 30 and 42 credits worth, which include a full array of humanities offerings. In addition, humanities are present in interdisciplinary knowledge areas, from areas of study focused on locale, race, and ethnicity, to disability studies, food studies, gender studies, gerontological studies, health studies, health sciences administration. Over 45 new areas that integrate the humanities are represented. Added to this, many programs in the arts have blurred the boundaries between arts practice and pure humanities content. The expansive reach of the humanities and their dispersion at CUNY have been in part propelled by the increasing diversity of our faculty, who studied disciplines that reflected their experiences of themselves and the world, and have brought that learning to our students and to curricular development. The student experience outside the classroom also includes exposure to and practice in humanities, knowledge, and skill areas. Student clubs, such as debating societies, cultural and multi-faith clubs, language clubs, clubs for neurodivergent individuals, altruism clubs, are all informed by interest in the humanities. In addition to clubs, many initiatives in the humanities enrich our students collegiate experience. Over 35 centers and institutes in the humanities at the university provide rich programming on a broad range of humanities topics, from medical humanities to racial justice, climate justice, and global ethics. All these educational experience help prepare students for their careers, for lifelong learning, and for the world they will inherit. Through this training, our students learn to thrive in a world of constant flux. Humanities education prepares our students for a plethora of careers, from advertising to public service, as well as for professional graduate education. There is no better training for passing the LSAT and succeeding in law school than the study of philosophy. Even in STEM-related professions, Google's famous Project Oxygen study found, the seven top characteristics of success at Google are all soft skills: the ability to coach, to communicate effectively, to listen carefully, to have insights into others, including those who have ideas and values that differ from one's own; the ability to feel and express empathy, be an adept critical thinker and problem solver, and be able to make connections across complex ideas and work on a team. In the Google studies, STEM training came in last. The scope of the humanities at CUNY is a broad one. At CUNY, we're committed to providing our students with a first-rate education regardless of means or background. The humanities help us achieve that goal and prepare students for the uncertainties of the future. That concludes my testimony. Thank you for your time. To further describe the reach of the humanities on our campuses, I turn now to my colleague, Associate Dean Karen Beck from Lehman.
Thank, that was very invigorating. It's very exciting. Thank you. Yes, Dr. Beck.
Hi, my name is Karen Beck. I'm the Associate Dean of the School of Arts and Humanities at Lehman College. Thank you, Committee Chair Dinowitz and members of the City Committee on Higher Education, for the opportunity to provide testimony about the humanities at Lehman. We need creative thinkers now more than ever. A discourse that limits workforce needs and career opportunities to the tech and health industries in fact neglects workforce needs, as well as the importance of the creative industries and the cultural sector for the thriving of our city. Studying the humanities is not a privilege for the wealthy. It is a right and a necessity for everyone who chooses to do so, and, with the right support, it is a great stepping stone for a successful career. In the arts and humanities at Lehman College, we see ourselves as an engine of upward creativity. We strive to empower students to go beyond the limits of their imaginations. Let me give you just some short examples how Lehman graduates enhance the culture of our city. A recent graduate of our journalism program is now the Bronx reporter for the new journal The City. A music graduate is working for the Afro-Latin Jazz Alliance. A recent graduate of the English department is now working for the Doe Foundation. A graduate of Latin American Studies won the Miranda Family Fellowship for a PhD in History at the Graduate Center. And a graduate of Philosophy and Political Science went on to the CUNY School of Law and is now a City Councilmember and serves on this committee, but has left the room. It's Councilmember Felice.
He had great attendance in school, though. That's what matters.
In September '22, CUNY launched, in cooperation with the city, the CUNY Inclusive Economy Initiative, with a focus on the tech, health, and green economy sectors. A liberal arts pilot is financed out of private funding. Two schools are receiving funding for the humanities and the arts, Lehman College and Baruch. Let me add here from the footnote that the CIE is funded by $13 million, and the money for the liberal arts is half a million dollar per year. Despite its success, it is, the program is thriving. Despite its success, it is, however, not part of the continued funding of the CIE as the tech and health programs are. Furthermore, since many of the potential employers for our students are small cultural or community organizations, they cannot afford to pay the students. An advantage of programs that pay students as stipend is that it gives them the same chance in the workforce as students from richer institutions who can afford to accept unpaid work. Beyond internships, we are incorporating experiential learning in our curriculum as much as possible. A class in Latino-popular culture, for example, uses the new possibilities of online learning combined with learning off-campus at museums and cultural events. This does not only expose students to the cultural institutions of the city, but also to the career opportunities in the arts and cultural entrepreneurship. The English department has recently updated their curriculum and centered it on underrepresented voices. These are also central in our atlas anchored in the liberal arts program funded by the Teagle Foundation. It offers general education classes that focus on the reading and discussion of transformative texts, challenging and transforming the students' thinking. We are committed to a transformational curriculum through a deep study of texts that gives students a sense of belonging to a community of scholars and thinkers, and strengthens students' intellectual development and impact their future careers. Arts and humanities reach all students at the college. Nursing students, for example, take classes in Africana Studies to better understand the communities that they will be interacting with. In these humanities classes, students of all majors find their voices. New York City needs to hear them. Upward mobility needs to be grounded in upward creativity to become inclusive and truly transformative.
My name is Dionne Miller, and I am an Associate Dean for Academic Affairs and also the Liberal Arts Program Director at LaGuardia Community College. Thank you, Committee Chair Dinowitz and members of the City Council Higher Education Committee, for the opportunity to provide testimony about humanities education at CUNY. As a two-year college in the CUNY system, LaGuardia's mission is in part, and I quote, "to educate and graduate one of the most diverse student populations in the country, to become critical thinkers and socially responsible citizens," end of quote. Part of how we achieve this is by providing them with a robust humanities department and curriculum. In 2022, LaGuardia served over 23,000 students in pre-college, associate degree, and continuing education programs. Consistent with the demographics of Queens, 52% of LaGuardia students are born outside of the United States. They come from 130 countries and speak 54 heritage languages. More than half, 54%, are first-generation college students. Virtually all LaGuardia students are ethnic minorities, 88%. 48% are Hispanic, almost double the threshold of 25% required by the U.S. Department of Education for designation as a Hispanic-serving institution. To this vibrant, diverse student body, we offer an equally diverse and vibrant humanities curriculum as part of our general education offerings, but also as majors. These include courses and programs in English, creative writing, philosophy, and Spanish-English translation. We offer an interdisciplinary social science and humanities liberal arts degree, one of the largest enrolled in the college. Within the liberal arts degree, students are able to add concentrations in ethnic studies, Japanese, Latin American Studies, and TESOL, teaching English to speakers of other languages and linguistics. Starting this academic year, we are proud to be one of the first two-year colleges in the nation to offer a concentration in health humanities, developed with the support of a grant from the National Endowment for the Humanities. LaGuardia also offers courses in a wide range of modern languages, including American Sign Language, Bengali, Arabic, Chinese, Korean, Uzbek, and Haitian Creole, to name a few. Students in our humanities majors are successful as measured by graduation and transfer rates. The three-year graduation rate for first-time, full-time students in the 2019 cohort of the English and Creative Writing Program is 66.7%, although my data people made me emphasize that it was a small cohort. And the three-year transfer rate is 81.3% for English and 75% for Creative Writing majors. While the Social Science and Humanities graduation rates are more in line with the college average at 27.8%, these students over three years transfer at a rate of 63.8%. Moreover, the majority of the English and Creative Writing majors, 80.2%, transfer into similar programs at their four-year colleges, such as English, English Literature, Creative Writing, Journalism, and Film Studies. Our liberal arts majors, as would be expected, transfer into a wide range of programs from Psychology to Finance, English Literature, and Public Administration. LaGuardia's success has not been accidental, but is the result of focused strategies to support our students. We have implemented at scale a credit-bearing first-year seminar experience that integrates discipline-based curriculum taught by disciplinary faculty with an introduction to college advising and co-curricular innovation. In an Inside Higher Ed article earlier this year titled "Rewriting the English Curriculum" by Joano Alonso, the author notes that for English majors at LaGuardia, the program has been intentional in emphasizing the versatility of an English degree. Alonso writes, and I quote, "In multiple courses, starting in the first-year seminar, students learn about different fields and professions in which they could use an English degree, such as event planning, book publishing, and public relations. As a result, a high percentage of English majors transfer to a bachelor's program within one to three years of graduating," end quote. For liberal arts students, major-specific advising reinforces to students that they are gaining vital skills for academic and professional success, such as writing and research, critical thinking, teamwork, while retaining maximum flexibility upon transfer. Another recent New York Times guest essay, "Let's Stop Pretending College Degrees Don't Matter" by Ben Wildersky, reinforces the point that the broad education and targeted skills humanities and liberal arts graduates obtain have significant long-term benefits, no matter what majors and careers these students ultimately pursue. Lastly, LaGuardia also has a focus on experiential and co-curricular learning. Students in our English and Creative Writing Programs, for example, can take semester-long, credit-bearing internship courses that provide the opportunity to work closely with faculty and peers in developing the college's literary magazine, The Lit, or the college newspaper, The Bridge, work with an external media organization, or work on a faculty member's scholarly research projects. Students can also participate in civic and community-engaged projects. At LaGuardia, despite our successes, we know our work is not done. We continue to innovate and scale up high-impact practices to support all our students. We thank the City Council for the support it continues to provide in fulfilling our mission. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your testimony. We've been joined by Councilmember Vernikov. Thank you for joining us. I have a sort of just a broad question, and we'll get into some more details, but, Dr. Beck, you said one of the important things, a general education class that focuses on reading, discussion of transformative texts, challenging and transforming the students' thinking, and that was a very interesting phrase you used, especially now as we're dealing with a lot of difficult topics here in New York City and across the country with curriculum changes, and people in positions like mine being able to challenge our own thinking and speak to one another and challenge other people's thinking in a way that's appropriate and respectful. Do you see any relationship between some of the political climate that we're in right now and the humanities curriculum and the decline in the humanities in our colleges?
Thank you for the question, Chair Dinowitz. Could you make it any broader?
Well, I'm interested in your thoughts. You're a real expert on this issue, and I'm going to get more broadly, kind of the importance of humanities, not just, because we'll get into jobs and graduation rates, but where we are as a city and a country, I think, speaks to the fundamental purpose of studying the humanities, so I wanted to hear a little more of your thoughts on that before I got into some of the other questions.
I see a large, a huge danger right now in the discourse that undervalues the humanities. I want to be very careful in my phrasing here. We have, I think, when we have discussion at the college about the backlash against critical race theory, I do see in this backlash actually an indicator how afraid people are of books, how afraid leaders are of critical thinking and of an approach to history that digs out the truth. And I do believe that this is actually a sign of how important, that we're obviously doing something right in the humanities if we are upsetting people in this way. So this kind of challenging has to continue. At the same time, there's, you know, a lot of business decisions or other big decisions, other decisions or political decisions tend to be made in what is called a data-inforced, a data-informed way. And very often, data is then read in a very simplistic way, which I think can be another indicator for a lack of a humanities education besides a business education. That's why Professor Lopes could point out that at Google, it is the humanities education that helps you, that helps more than the STEM education. So I do think that, yes, the lack of a humanities education and a tendency towards a simplification of it has really, is connected to this tendency that you have described, and thus, we are trying to, at the same time, challenge our students and their thinking and bring them in contact with their own traditions. So our Atlas program focuses on underrepresented voices and focuses on the traditions that are often the ones our students come from. So we try to help them to find their roots so they have, can have a strong standing from where to challenge themselves and to challenge the world.
Yes, you know, it's interesting to talk about challenging one's own perspective. You know, one of the issues that Councilmember Vernikov and I have worked on is the issue of antisemitism at CUNY, and the reports we get, among others, are students feeling like they are not able to express themselves as Jews or as Zionists because they are shouted down in class, or they are told by their professors that that is a wrong perspective to have, which is, sounds to me like quite the opposite of what a good humanities education would support. So certainly something that, all around, needs to be enhanced all over CUNY for a variety of reasons. And certainly, as you mentioned, data, and I'd love to hear from either of our other witnesses as well, and we know that the data, the use of data, and of course, going into automation and AI, sort of reinforces existing biases. The decision-makers made an algorithm, and the data will just reinforce that. And so, is there, are there steps being done at CUNY to recognize this, I guess, dangerous path going down when we talk about the engineering's going up, computer science? Any steps to require more humanities courses for the STEM degrees? more humanities courses for the STEM degrees to delve into some of the issues that Dr. Beck was raising?
I'm unaware of the requirement issue at CUNY. Certainly, this is being raised as an issue, particularly with AI, which is, raises the bias issue that you so described, and other issues where the humanities can certainly temper or, I guess, address and confront some of the issues that AI brings forward. And one very important initiative coming out of Academic Affairs, CUNY-wide, so at Central Administration, and then CUNY-wide, will be to address these AI issues, that this is a critical and important part of the future. And it's also one that we have to, A, embrace, and B, learn how to use effectively so that it is mind-expanding as opposed to mind-limiting, right? When it comes to our creativity and our abilities to deal with each other and the diversity of ideas and accept the diversity of ideas.
So I just want to make sure, I heard right, so I'll ask a little clarifying. Is CUNY, is part of the discussion, as AI is part of this discussion, is part of that discussion requiring more, again, requiring more humanities classes and ethics classes, things like that, for students in these tech fields?
So there is some discussion. So the requirement is, you know, is not there yet, right? So, but there is discussion about what is the place of AI in general education, for instance? And what is the place of dealing with these issues around AI in general education? So raising this issue in terms of education that all students at CUNY will be exposed to, it's not that far down the road yet, right? It's the beginning.
Well, it's here, so.
Yeah, exactly. But you know how fast colleges change, right?
Yeah, I would just hope you would rephrase a little bit. You know, the real question, I think, as part of this hearing, should be, not where is the place of AI, it's where is the place of humanities? Where does humanities belong? And the answer seems to be everywhere.
Everywhere.
Whether we're talking about automation, talking about political discourse and history, or we're talking about, as was mentioned, Google, STEM, right there in the tech fields, the soft skills. It seems everywhere you look, if CUNY students are going to be as successful as possible as members of our society or in the STEM fields or any fields, it would seem to me that the question should be, how do we incorporate humanities and require it, without quotation marks, into every curriculum?
So it is in general education, throughout general education. It is in all of these interdisciplinary areas. The sciences are also STEM fields, informed by the humanities. And there are many courses that are humanities-informed in STEM fields. You know, right from ethical decision-making, that's almost part of every discipline, part of the humanities, dealing with those ethical questions, to all kinds of critical thinking skills that are infused. So that kind of humanities knowledge, the history of a discipline, comes from the humanities. When we think about histories and how ideas change, all of that is certainly part of the curriculum. And will, I believe, I don't know, but I believe, in terms of CUNY and the discussions that are happening on the campuses, will continue to increase as we see these changes occur in our society.
Right, and we don't have to think back that far to remember the early days of the pandemic and even when the vaccines first came out. We're really outside of the actual science, where so much of the skills required us as a society to work together and to communicate with one another. And even the scientists on the teams developing the vaccines didn't do it in a vacuum. They did it as teams working, you know, working collaboratively, challenging each other's thoughts. We've been joined by the one and only Councilman, just regular Councilmember, Gail Brewer. She really hates alcoholics. She hates a lot of things. I have a question about data, because it was mentioned before that the data, as judged by the graduation rate and the transfer rate, humanities are successful. Are there any other data that are collected? For example, job placement and salaries from graduates of the humanities at LaGuardia or at CUNY as a whole?
I can speak for LaGuardia in that it's, we actually don't have that data. It's actually very difficult to track students when they, because of course, as a two-year degree, students are transferring to complete a four-year degree and then enter the workforce. So it's been very difficult to get that information. You know, we send out student surveys and our team has some limited amount of data, but it's hard to distinguish humanities graduates in that data pool.
I'm unaware of that data, but I'll check.
Right, I mean, I would imagine CUNY Central would track data. I see the head nod.
Yeah, well, graduate, I don't know what the, if we track it that way for all campuses, but I will check.
Right, I think the data overall from the country is that humanities is on a par with, or almost on a par with other majors.
It is nationally.
Nationally, right. And I would, I think it would be of great interest to this committee and of course, our city to show the viability of English, it's always the butt of every joke, but English as a viable degree for a career track. And we were focusing a lot on STEM, which is great, but it often seems at the expense of humanities fields. And I see, I see you're both nodding your head.
So you're looking for income data, yeah?
Income data and job placement data, yeah. But at Lehman College, you've been bucking the trend. You've been successful in increasing or maintaining your humanities majors. And I'm, is that due in part to the half a million dollars that you were speaking about earlier?
So first, I have to clarify. We are bucking the trend, it is not going down. So the absolute number of majors is now going down, but not as a percentage of students graduating.
I'm sorry, say that again.
Okay, we have been bucking the trend in that the number, that we are not at 14% or the 17% reduction in students graduating, but over from 2010 to 2020, the number of graduates in the humanities at Lehman College has actually increased, so.
And what do you attribute that? I mean, so compared to the rest of the country, though, right, because that's what it is, comparison, it's more successful in attracting and retaining students in the humanities. And what can you attribute that to?
So we can't attribute that to the half million dollars in the CIE funds, because that only started in January of 2023. So I don't think we can attribute a tendency of the last 10 years to that. I think what is very impressive was, for example, that at Lehman College, the number of English majors did go up, which I attribute to very strong English classes in the general education program and to a strong first-year experience program that we have had at Lehman for over 20 years, where students are being exposed to different majors. Also, the good cooperation with the nursing department, where we have a lot of students that enter our college dreaming of being a nurse, which is the, it's the perfect first-generation position for upward mobility. But so many students cannot do that. So we have always cooperated very well to move students early into other possible majors for them. Also, we are working very closely together in Arts and Humanities. All our majors are offering combined sections, as we call it. I'm saying cross-listed courses now, because that's what people better understand, but that's really not what it is. So a class might be offered by Africana Studies, Latino Studies, and English Department together, one professor teaching all three fields. Thus, the students can get exposed to all these different majors. We have also worked very, we have active clubs. We have several journals and newspapers at the college, and we have worked very closely with the students. And we're working closely with career education. We're trying to be very practical, but we know that this is still an area where we can gain. What we are seeing is that a lot of students are interested in taking creative writing classes as general education classes. That is one thing we have noticed, and we are now increasing and building out the creative writing part of the English major. And I believe this is part of the story that students want to be, that especially minority students want to be able to tell their story.
I would note that one of my staff members majored in creative writing, and now she's working in the City Council, which I think speaks to, you know, how impactful these degrees can be in your ability to adapt to any situation. Dr. Miller, are there, is your first-year experience for the students similar to what was described about Lehman College, where the students have a strong first-year experience and that's why you have a successful humanities program?
I would say yes. We have a really impactful first-year experience where students are in seminars that are discipline-based. So students in the English major are with other English majors taught by English faculty, who are able to get up close with what majoring in this discipline looks like. And we're able to, you know, or, as I mentioned in my remarks, we have first-generation students. And a lot of our students come to LaGuardia, and it's nursing or computers or engineering, things that people recognize quite easily as paths towards the middle class. So we are very careful about making sure that students understand that there are other ways to be successful. And we understand the need to get a credential that gives you a good job, but that there are other fields that you can attain this through. And so these first-year experience classes are very good about grounding students in the discipline from day one. We also have lots of innovative programming like our collaborative online international learning where that's built into our students' regular general ed classes or some of their program courses, where they're learning to collaborate with students in other countries, online activities. We have community-based programs where we have partnered, for instance, with the Malala Foundation, and they're thinking about issues of women's education, girls' education. And students in our new media classes are creating videos, and students in education are creating lesson plans. And so they're beginning to see how their work connects across fields, across the globe, and to give them just a very different perspective about what they could be doing that, career-wise and major-wise, that they could find impactful. So I think the combination of the first-year experience programs like our collaborative online international learning, or it's called the LaGuardia Humanitarian Initiative, where they're doing community-based work, all of these areas reinforce to students that there are lots of pathways in the humanities.
You mentioned a few items that this committee has taken up, in fact, including credentialing programs. And one of the things we just, that I've spoken about a lot is that, you know, when I taught high school, it seemed to me that there were a lot of students who had to wait until they graduated high school to find that they were really good at something else, really talented. There should be other pathways besides the standard high school curriculum, vocational training, those certification and other areas. But some of the feedback that I've gotten from some professors I've spoken to at CUNY, they've told me it's almost the opposite problem, that there's been a lot of pressure for students to have the pathway right into the STEM area, the engineering, that advisors are pushing them towards one specific field, and students don't have the opportunity to explore the humanities and other, and explore for themselves the areas they'd like to study. Have any of you experienced that, either on your campuses or heard your friends talk about it?
I think one thing that's happened is that there is, there are meta-majors. So students look at and enroll in programs with advisors in a combination of experiences when they start out as first-year students, certainly at the senior college level. You know, they have more credits to play with, right? So they can explore a group of majors and have an opportunity really to do that. At the associate's level, they have a more limited number of credits, right, to work with than they do at the senior college level. So there's great exploration that is also part of the undergraduate program and built into the undergraduate program through 42 credits of general education as well. And you're not married to your major. Many students change their major multiple times, right? Because they learn about these other disciplines. And that's what general education is about, right? The ability to expose you to these other disciplines, including all, you know, the plethora of humanities, right? That's part of it.
But I mean, it sounds like you said, yes, in the four-year colleges, it's a little easier. There's more flexibility to explore different things. But on the associate's level, they really do come in with a pathway, and they are guided to specific things, despite the fact that perhaps college may be a place where some students do need to figure out what they want to do or explore different disciplines.
They do have very broad degrees, too, at the associate's level. So there is a liberal studies kind of degree, right? A liberal arts degree. And I believe that something like 40% of students, Sir Dion might know this better than I do.
Part of my life's work. You know, I should probably confess that I am a STEM major myself, right? My PhD is actually in chemistry. But unfortunately, our students have to declare a major as they come in the door. And this is one of the greatest challenges that we have, that for financial aid purposes, and 90-plus percent of our students need financial aid, they have to declare a major. And that immediately limits the possibilities for exploring. For the Liberal Arts program, unfortunately, the messaging has been from high school, oh, well, Liberal Arts is the place that you go when you don't know what you want to do. And then as soon as you figure it out, then you transfer into that other thing. So I spent the last few years on initiatives.
And that's why you transferred to STEM?
Unfortunately, well, long story.
I'm just kidding.
But, you know, at LaGuardia, we've now been really intentional about telling students in our Liberal Arts program that this is a valid, vibrant disciplinary area in and of itself and offers you the maximum flexibility to transfer into other career paths when you go to your four-year college. So we tell students, for instance, that if you add a concentration in Health Humanities, that's a great pathway still into nursing or some other health science career. It doesn't mean that you have to pursue a degree in Health Humanities when you transfer. So we've been trying to change that messaging that the Liberal Arts is just a holding tank in terms of majors. But it is an issue that we've now, we're doing implementation, greater implementation of what we call guided pathways, where students will be in similar disciplinary fields again, where they can now explore a little broadly in at least that first semester. But having to declare a major is a challenge that we have at the two-year level.
Is it the Pathways program?
Oh, no.
That's different, okay.
No, different.
Guided pathways.
Different, different. Something that we work with, with our friends from Columbia University.
One of you's got to rename it, because it's just too confusing.
I know, there are too many pathways running around, yes.
If there's one thing we want less of for our students, it's pathways, right? Dr. Beck?
And if I may say, the one thing we really should not want for our students is pipelines. You know, the pipeline to success, the pipeline to STEM, to pipeline from the student to, from the high school to pipeline.
Right, they rebranded it Pathway, so it's fine.
Yes, they rebranded Pipelines Pathways. I would like to say that at Lehman College, we have, we are one of the very few CUNY colleges that do not require students to declare a major when they enter. We actually don't allow them to declare a major until their sophomore year, which might be another reason why we have more humanities majors. And my third point, the third point I would like to make on the record here, that one of the reasons why students have so few possibilities to explore are the very, very rigid TAP financial aid requirements of New York State.
Some support from the audience there. So you ascribe some of the success to the fact that they can't So you ascribe some of the success to the fact that they can't declare a major and you ascribe some of the shortcomings is that they have to. And that's, and you mentioned TAP. When you say financial aid, do you mean a federal, state? What, what do you mean by, when you say financial aid? Is that all financial aid programs?
I don't want to venture into areas I'm not an expert about, but it's between the federal and state financial aid that I am told that students must declare a major as soon as they register.
It's, okay, I'd like to recognize Councilmember Brewer.
I just have one question. First of all, it's a great topic. I guess, is it a selling point? I teach at Hunter, one class, so I have some sense of how great your students are. But is it a selling point that to be able to write in 2023, English, Spanish, whatever language, is an asset like none other? I mean, actually this year I had students and they were phenomenal writers and they're from all over the world and in many cases, English is not their first language. Excellent writers. Other years, oh my God, you are a terrible writer. So my question is, is this a selling point? It may not be, but I can say from many years of experience, the writers are my angels in general. So does that help you with humanities or it doesn't really do much?
From the employer point of view, yeah, it helps quite a bit because employers are very clear that they are looking for people who are literate, who can write and speak properly and that they need people who can communicate effectively. So it's a definite selling point, particularly for career success.
We emphasize especially for our liberal arts majors who are usually maligned and sometimes by parents, understandably, you know, what are you going to do with that degree? Is that we spend a lot of time emphasizing that the skills that they gain from humanities and other liberal arts or social science courses give these valuable skills that are valuable as they continue their academic careers, the teamwork, the communication, the critical thinking, the writing, and it's also valued by employers. And we spend a lot of time showing the research and the articles where employers are saying this over and over again. I worked these past two years on apprenticeship programs with tech, in the tech field for two of our programs. And part of what we, we provided for students were the so-called soft skills training, additional soft skill or professional skills training for those tech students as they're entering the workplace. So I think we, we emphasize the value, whether you're a STEM major or a straight humanities major, that these skills are transferable across all disciplines and careers.
As an aside, I do, I do all sorts of things to make Council Brewer, Councilmember Brewer very angry at me. I'm going to do one right now and I'm going to, I'm going to wish her a wonderful, wonderful, happy birthday.
Happy birthday.
Thank you. Continue with the hearing, please.
She made fun of my tie a couple of months ago, so I'm getting back. Does, does CUNY have any plans for, given how important humanities are and how successful, we have successful models, does CUNY have plans to expand its humanities courses and programs? Are there additional resources needed to do that? Are there any obstacles preventing CUNY from expanding its humanity courses?
I don't think there are, there are those kinds of obstacles. So one thing that my remarks talked about was the dispersion of humanities into interdisciplinary fields. That's where the real growth is right now. The humanities are really everywhere and informing so many disciplines and the increase of these interdisciplinary knowledge areas that have humanities from disability studies to Africana studies. It's, it's critical that those areas continue to grow because that's where the new and emerging knowledge is, right? And they include real full humanities content in those areas and as they do other interdisciplinary content, right, from the social sciences or STEM or wherever else.
I'm, I mean, it's interesting that you mentioned disability studies. That was, when I went to Hunter, my, my, my master's was in teaching students with disabilities. And I think my experience was a little different, that in some of my courses, it was very much, here's the disability, here's the classification, here's how you identify it and not enough of the literature about what it means to be a person living with a disability, what it means to be a parent with a child with a disability. And I, I just think even in my own schooling, how valuable that would have been to my, my being a teacher and my working with my students with disabilities and, and their families.
You should have gone to Lehman College. We have a disability studies minor under the leadership of one of the nation's leading disability scholars, a philosopher, Julie Mayby, and she works very, very closely, though not close enough, I think we really have to work on that with the School of Education to work together. But that more theoretical underpinning of what is disability, how does the society create the whole concept of disability, that is very strong at Lehman. We have a minor in it.
I'll, I'll go back for my continuing education courses.
Absolutely do it and continue in education. And I also would like to reinforce what Dean Lopes has said before. Lopez has said before that the Bressi Initiative, for example, that she has mentioned in her testimony, was one point where the funding of social sciences and the humanities has been increased over the last couple of years. But if you ask about obstacles, then I think the example that I used about the CIE, that is a funding for internships mainly in the tech and health industries, but not so much in the humanities, these are the kind of obstacles we, we walk into because the humanities are over and over an afterthought.
What does the chancellor want to be known as? He says it every time I hear him, he says the patron, the patron saint of paid internships.
Paid internships, right. So they would be.
That should include humanities, is what you're saying.
That should include humanities and that should include ways of finding to pay for these internships because paid internships in this sense can only be offered by very rich institutions. But if we would actually work together and give students a stipend for paid internships, both community organizations and cultural institutions would, would profit as well as the students.
I, I would add that sort of pushing back against the trend and even despite the, the funding challenges, LaGuardia has introduced many sort of interdisciplinary type courses that students all across the college take. So we have women, gender and sexuality studies, we have ethnic studies. As I just mentioned, we've just launched our health humanities concentration and there's a course that's coming in literature and medicine, for instance, for people to talk, students to delve into how people process illness through creative expression. So we've developed so many new courses like that, that are available again as part of our gen ed and as part of concentrations. But I'm sure the humanities faculty will tell you that there's so much more they would want to do, but there is just no funding. We have a great theater program. I know that's technically not humanities, but we have a great theater program who, they put on amazing productions, the students go to the Kennedy Festival, but there's always a struggle to, for the college to find funding to support these kinds of programs. Where internships are concerned, our foundation has raised money that's used to fund student internships. So where we work with like some of our small businesses in Queens so that if they can't, the businesses themselves can't afford to fund the student, LaGuardia can pay the student so that they're able to take advantage of these internships because over 70% of our students work and need to work to support themselves. So there are times when we have these opportunities and they can't even take them because they need to pay the rent and internships won't, won't do that. But that's one way we support, we support students in being able to have that sort of experience that's going to maybe be life-changing.
I just want to add one thing to that, which is a real need as well. There's so much money for research in, in the sciences for faculty and for faculty to work with students on their research as role models for their students. So the students actually do the research with the faculty, tons of money, federal money. But in the humanities, there's almost nothing for undergraduate research in the humanities. That, that could make a huge difference for our students in introducing them to the humanities and rich careers for themselves in humanities so that they become the professors too in the future. That's important.
I want to thank the three of you for your testimony today and for answering the committee's questions and of course, for the work you do every day for the, the students here in New York City. Thank you.
You're welcome.
For our next panel, I'd like to call Tamara Twill and Kelly Kreitz. record.
Hello, my name is Tamara Twill and I want to thank the committee for turning their attention to this important issue and to our partners at CUNY for their exceptional leadership in the field of humanities education. I am here on behalf of the Teagle Foundation, an institution dedicated to supporting and strengthening humanities education, which we believe is fundamental to meaningful work, effective citizenship and a fulfilling life. We all know that the humanities are on a steep and dangerous decline. In the last 10 years alone, the study of English and history has dropped by a third. But what is often missed in the media discussions and what I want to share with you today is why a humanistic education is so urgent for New York City students. It is urgent for them as individuals, as community members and as residents of our great city. The humanities not only prepare students for jobs, they also prepare them for their whole lives. In a shifting employment landscape, we know the essential skills of a humanistic classroom and we've discussed this, public speaking, writing, reasoning, open-minded thinking are more important forever. But subjects like English and history also prepare students for, for full and complex lives. They invite individuals at a tender age of transition to confront and discuss their most pressing questions on the nature of love, on the challenges of loss and on the very real tensions of leaving home. In an age where loneliness and mental health issues are national crises, humanities classes are some of the only spaces on college campuses where students of all different backgrounds practice being in community with one another. They do this through the discipline of reading shared texts, discussing them and listening to one another. It has also been shown for this reason, and we talked about this with freshman year experiences, to help with college persistence in freshman year and beyond. Finally, the humanities are a fundamental part of an education for civic responsibility. It is in the humanities that students are taught how to empathize with lives different than their own, how to see one issue from multiple perspectives, how to engage in civil discourse and honest debate, and how to understand that the gap between our nation's aspirations and our political reality is serious and requires their commitment. No matter how many innovations we create in the scientific sphere, we will always need to learn how to organize ourselves into functioning social communities. This is the job of this urgent form of knowledge and it cannot and must not be treated like a luxury only to be had at private institutions. At the foundation, we believe that every institution of higher learning has the task of taking stock why our democracy exists, whom it serves and what it must do to educate the next generation of students. Over the last 10 years, CUNY has been doing just that. We are incredibly proud of our partnership with a number of schools at CUNY, including the City College of New York, Lehman College, Ostos Community College and LaGuardia Community College, to name a few. In fact, we regularly name these places and the humanities programs they are running as models for institutions across the country. Lehman College is currently a shining example in a national program called Cornerstone Learning for Living, where students participate in small seminars and discuss shared texts. The New York City Leaders Fellowship, which emerged at City College, gives students who are invested in becoming public servants, courses that in addition to teaching them how to run a city budget, helps them understand the history of the city itself, the changing ideas of freedom and the incredible value of self-governance. The foundation sees these grants as a modest investment in a vital and transformative form of education, the kind that reminds us all what education is for and why CUNY is so deeply important. It prepares the next generation to invest in themselves and in our great city. Thank you.
Thank you. Make sure your microphone's on, the red light should be on.
Looks like maybe, there we go.
You did it. You didn't need a STEM degree for that either.
Hi, everyone. My name is Kelly Kreitz. I'm an associate professor of English at Pace University right across the street. I'm also the director of our experiential learning initiative in the provost's office at Pace. And I'll start with just a little bit of context. Our university is a private, mid-sized, regional, comprehensive teaching university. Our arts and sciences is our largest school. We have about 6,000 undergraduates on our New York City campus across all of our schools. About 3,300 of those undergraduates are in our Dyson College of Arts and Sciences. Our student body is about 40% black, indigenous, people of color. 95% of our students are on financial aid. 25% of our students roughly are first gen college students. Our admissions rate is 83%. A little bit about our faculty, our arts and sciences faculty, we have 250 full-time faculty, about 520 part-time. And in my department in English, we have 10 tenured faculty, four contract faculty and about 70 to 80 adjuncts during any given semester. And our strength as an institution is experiential learning, which combines academic exploration, which we've been talking about quite a lot here, with career preparation. And it includes classroom-based and also independent undergraduate research and civic engagement as, as two of our strengths. So the significance of the humanities, we've always seen the humanities as an essential, essential component of our liberal arts core at Pace. And earlier, the humanities participated in Pace's focus on preparing what we called at the time, thinking professionals, back when Pace started as a business school in 1906. And we're now in the process of re-centering the humanities as we position the university for the rapidly changing field of higher education. Some of our focus comes from recent momentum and here I'll name some statistics that defy national trends. Since fall 21, fall 2021 each year, since then, we have seen our largest ever enrollment in humanities majors for incoming first years. This is especially true in English Communication Studies and Film and Screen Studies. And this past spring, 2023, our English major received national attention for its growth, about 50% over the last two years to about 150 majors, again in defiance of national trends, which we credit to its place-based experiential approach. And also related to that, some of the same sorts of initiatives that we heard talked about here today. So we really in the English department have focused on underrepresented voices and empowering students to put past injustices in conversation with ongoing struggles for racial and social justice. So we understand the value of the humanities from various perspectives, not just growth of majors. We understand it as part of our mission. perspectives, not just growth of majors. We understand it as part of our mission as an educational institution that puts the liberal arts core at the center. We believe that humanities have a vital role to play in giving everyone a place in the world as makers of democracy. And this is especially through a focus on empowering students to explore and participate in the production of knowledge about their own heritage, their experiences of racism, sexism, and economic inequality, and to blaze new pathways through the future. Humanities majors lead to desirable career paths. Our English majors, for example, go on to gain full employment in publishing, the arts, media, business, education, law, and the nonprofit sector. They also prepare students in our professional schools with interdisciplinary skill sets that make them competitive. And we hear this a lot from our career services, that our STEM majors, for example, are more competitive when they can show really solid humanistic backgrounds in their majors. We also believe, and we heard this earlier, that the humanities are key to innovation. We know that our future is multidisciplinary and we need strong departments for that innovation. So just really quickly to conclude, some of the challenges that we confront have to do with metrics. When we look at growth alone, it's really hard to demonstrate the value of our programs. But when we start to look at things like who's contributing to the first-year experience, who's contributing to retention, who's contributing to multidisciplinary innovation, we get a very different picture of the value of the humanities. And I think that question of metrics is a really important one for us to be having both internally with our institutions and also with the consulting firms, with the foundations that help us set priorities and demonstrate success. I'll just say quickly about investment in the humanities. Part of this needs to come from communicating through our budgets, through our messaging and institutions, that we value the humanities. And student interest, I think, does follow where they see value being demonstrated or interest being demonstrated in the university. So we envision a future at Pace in which the humanities are central within institutions of higher learning and widely available within the daily lives of individuals and the shared experiences of communities. So the humanities are central to making universities into sites of preparing students to become makers of the world in which they want to live. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm looking at your pie charts. You can't read the pie chart, but I can see it. Because I do want to talk about metrics. It was one of the questions that I asked the previous panel. They had metrics on transfer rate, graduation data. But what are some of the other metrics, and this is for both of you, but I want to start, Ms. Kreitz, about what changes to the whole system, I think, what are necessary for measuring the value of humanities? And you have four survey questions. Are there other metrics that you think should be involved in measuring the value of humanities degree?
Yeah, absolutely. And I'll just say, just, you know, these survey questions are from our career services that just demonstrate what employers are looking for. And we already heard a lot about this from the previous panel of the soft skills. And I don't know if those are the network, those may be some of the metrics. But I think the thing that we really struggle with, and I think this is a real challenge for administrative leaders and faculty leaders, you know, as a leader, you need to show that you're being responsible about your decision-making. We do have an expectation that decisions are going to be data-driven. But what do you do when your data doesn't give the full picture, right? Part of what you do is you can bring your humanities skills from your humanities degrees to articulate that there is a problem. But, you know, so prior to coming to Pace, I spent some time working in nonprofit consulting, working with organizations, direct-service nonprofit organizations. And it really strikes me that in the direct service area of nonprofits, there are ways of talking about social impact. They're not perfect, but there is a conversation that exists about how do you look at your mission and determine that you're making progress towards your mission. It's been really difficult to find that in higher education. As we've gone through a strategic planning process over the last couple of years, as I've had conversations within and outside of Pace about how this might work, it seems that we really focus on growth and revenue. And it's very difficult to come up with other metrics that allow us to say, it also matters that our students are, say, reporting that they have fulfilling careers. It also matters that our students are going on to contributing to their communities. I think, you know, in the short term, the way that we can measure the value of the humanities has to do with more programmatic things, like are there departments that are contributing first-year experiences? Or, you know, how are departments contributing to delivering the humanities in these other ways that we're saying exist beyond majors? But in the long term, I think that there's a conversation that maybe doesn't need to just happen within universities, but starts here, but also involves funders, it involves the consultants who advise universities on the decisions they make. What does social impact look like in the educational sector? How can we start talking about that and measuring it? Because ultimately, that's what we need in order to make these very different decisions. I think that can center the humanities.
Yeah. And Ms. Twill, it's a little different for you, and you're in an organization that's giving money. And I always imagine that if you're giving money, there are some metrics. What do you look for to determine the success, or that you're getting, I guess, to put it this way, the best bang for your buck, that your investment is a wise investment?
It's a great question. And I can press a button.
And you don't need a STEM degree for that.
Yes. No, it's a wonderful question. I would say a few things, but this is very specific to our particular foundation. One is I think we're humble about what metrics can actually tell us, and we are invested in the long-term growth of students. So a lot of metrics, even like basic teacher evaluations, I know my best teachers, I didn't know how good they were until 10 years after I left their classroom. And sometimes you do an evaluation six months later, and I don't know what it, so I just want to say, first, we're very humble about it. We're very interested in longitudinal studies. And we're interested in framing questions that get to our mission, not just questions that are good metrics to prove to others. And that is, and I just want to say, I understand what a unique gift that is as a foundation, and it's not something that CUNY can do. But I will say, for civics work, a lot of our metrics are, and our humanities and civics, they are designed to see if there's intellectual and even like ethical growth inside of a classroom. So we'll do longitudinal studies on, did someone make an argument that actually expanded your mind? If so, what was it? Do you still remember it? Like, we'll play with those kinds of questions. We'll ask, where do you volunteer? What do you see as your essential community? Is it your school, your city, your neighborhood? Did the class or the series of class alter your perspective on democracy? How has your experience of America changed after taking a cornerstone course at Lehman? Like, those are the kinds of questions that we're interested in as a foundation.
Yeah, you're reminding me, we just got through last month, or a couple months ago, community board applications.
Right.
And, you know, so often we're looking for those exact questions. Do you participate in the community? What is driving you to better the community? Why do you want to participate on a community board? And so many of the things you spoke about, you know, ring true about the work I do about volunteering, people volunteering in the community and making their, making their community better, which is so important, as was mentioned, hard to measure, hard to put on a spreadsheet.
But I think, I'll just say this, I think that what we've learned is there are excellent forms of questions that work with quantitative data. And we still want those. We want to make sure that persistence is increasing. We're really invested in these freshman year experiences. They have a huge impact. We know if you have a cohort and a teacher, you're much more likely to not feel invisible and invest in your own education. But then we're also interested in new forms of just, you know, qualitative data. Like, we are humanists. We believe in stories. And so collecting a lot of these stories can be very persuasive.
So the way you're, you're both speaking, this vision and opportunity for the humanities, it requires a major shift in current thinking, even for many of us. You know, we do deal with a lot of quantitative data. We do a lot of metrics that are very specific to the economy, especially now that we just, two months ago, did our budget. But it does require a major shift in current thinking about the humanities within institutions of higher learning and beyond. And so what steps, or what are the important steps to benefit students, what are the most important steps to benefit students and to turn the tide?
This is a question I think about a lot. And, you know, I think of different levels of how this work can happen. And at an institutional level, one thing is making sure those things that work are continuing to get funded. So I know that one thing that came up earlier in the panel earlier is, you know, funding internships for community and cultural organizations. We have a community impact internship fund that started during the pandemic, that we've increased funding for, fundraising for every year because it is successful. And it is something that both gets students out into community and cultural organizations for paid internships that those organizations themselves wouldn't otherwise be able to pay for, and then also, of course, helps those organizations by bringing labor in. So finding those kinds of examples and funding them. I think there's a lot about storytelling, both within and outside the university. So another thing that can happen a lot that I see internally is that people are scared. Humanities faculty are scared. They feel threatened. Sometimes they feel threatened within conversations with their colleagues about the future of the university. And resetting the tone, which of course also ultimately has to be backed by directing funds from the budget, but communicating that we understand the value, right, as leaders of our institutions, communicating that we are going to start to move forward with initiatives that support what works, tell stories about what works, and then also invest in innovation. I think that's where it needs to start. And then I think it's also looking for the right partnerships to be able to move some of these bigger things, like the question of metrics. So knowing the metrics, for example, that the Teagle Foundation that you mentioned, that are both qualitative and quantitative, that start looking towards how our students' mindset's changing, how are students learning and growing the world? I think that could be huge. I think being able to work together to change the tools we have for having conversations and making decisions and telling stories is part of it as well.
I wish the CUNY panel was still up here because I think they would have really better answers than I do. But I will say, I think we're at an incredible moment in American education. With things like AI, I see like a deep desire to figure out what does it mean to be human? And what is the purpose of education in this world of new forms of intelligence? Is it, I think there's just a world of excitement there. And I also think there's a world of excitement on what does it mean to be a resident of the city, a citizen of the city? How do we think about our democracy right at this moment? I think the best place for this kind of urgent reconsidering of humanistic education is general education. Right now, it can seem like an afterthought. It can seem like not the most important place on campus. I think really reinvesting and building coherency and high content and intellectual urgency into general education is an answer.
I want to thank you both so much for your testimony and for answering. Did you have a question?
Just very quickly, it's my same experience when I teach sometimes high school students on a panel, and their parents won't let them, as you said earlier, participate in anything that looks like the humanities. So I guess my question is, is there some also, these are obviously for first generation in many cases, is there some part of what you're doing that also works with parents to explain the opportunities that the humanities offer? Because students want to do it, but the parents dissuade them.
Yeah, it's a great question. This does come up with some of my students, especially, as I said, we're about 25% first-generation college students. Again, I think it's that very slow work of changing the narrative. So if I have a student who comes to me and says, you know, my parents really don't want me to be an English major, which has happened, we start with the data. We start with, well, let's share with them what Career Services says about what employers want. You know, that's on an individual basis. But then the question becomes, what can we do as institutions to start to put out there the stories about these successes, right? And I think, I guess, on a daily basis, I try to think about making progress on both of those levels.
Thank you, panel. Thank you, Councilmember Brewer. I appreciate your testimony and answering the questions today. I will now call the next panel. From PSC CUNY, Luke Walter and Remi Salas and Barbara Bowen. Okay, Luke, you may begin when ready, and please state your name for the record.
Thank you, Luke Walter. Good afternoon. Thank you to the City Council for holding this important hearing, and to the PSC CUNY for organizing this panel. I'm the director of the Teaching and Learning Center at the CUNY Graduate Center, where I also earned a PhD in history. I've been there since 1999 in one capacity or another. One of my responsibilities is to co-direct the CUNY Humanities Alliance, which is a Mellon Foundation-funded project that supports doctoral students in the humanities in a variety of educational roles at four CUNY community colleges. Students at the Graduate Center have an outsized impact on the experience of CUNY undergraduates. Our students teach more than 5,000 courses to 150,000 undergraduates every year. One-third of those are in the humanities. In addition to their teaching, our students work in fellowships and libraries and in academic support centers throughout the CUNY system. We've heard about some of those projects, like COIL at LaGuardia, which Graduate Center students have supported. Many Graduate Center student alums become full-time CUNY faculty administrators and staff like myself. So my job is to support these students in their teaching and other work across CUNY, and to help them think about the kinds of careers for which their experience has prepared them. We're not simply training graduate students to do narrow research. We're also helping them think about the impact that their work may have and the range of skills necessary to maximize that impact. Our students are studying the most pressing issues of the moment and building community around their work that extends beyond CUNY's walls, deep into the city. These days, disciplinary training must be broad and porous, and our students are exposed to a range of methodologies within and beyond their fields from which they assemble their toolkits. These transferable skills and commitments are required to thrive in the modern economy and are passed through Graduate Center students to the thousands of undergraduates that they teach every year. I believe the study of the humanities enriches our communities and our personal lives. At the same time, it's not an idea that's in opposition to the notion of workforce development, as we've heard so eloquently today. Employers want graduates who are well-rounded and who can communicate with various audiences effectively. The humanities are necessary to comprehend and communicate the ethical dimensions of the drivers of economic development in the 21st century, including machine learning, artificial intelligence, healthcare, and clean energy. It's not news that trends in public higher education are hostile to the humanities and to the notion of liberal education more broadly, while wealthier private institutions deepen their investments in these areas. West Virginia University has redirected resources away from the humanities and towards technical and vocational programs. Institutions like BYU Idaho and NSINE College have approved 90-credit BAs in business management and applied health by eliminating general education requirements in the humanities. At CUNY and in New York, we have a choice. Do we want to follow these concerning trends that narrow degree into a vocational pursuit? Or do we want to double down on our mission of access by seriously considering just what we're giving the children of the whole people access to? We must welcome them into institutions that are pathways to the worlds of knowledge that simply can't be accessed, comprehended, or extended without a deep and enduring institutional commitment to the humanities. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Walter. Ms. Bowen?
Thank you very much. Good afternoon. Nice to be back here and to be with you. I'm Barbara Bowen. I'm now a professor of English at Queens College in the Graduate Center, and I'm the former president of the PSC. The current PSC president, James Davis, and the other officers regret that they can't be here. There was a collective bargaining session that conflicted with today's hearing. I hear two questions in the title of today's hearing. First, whether studying the humanities in an economy that worships technology and substitutes gig work for secure employment can lead to a meaningful job. There is abundant proof that the answer to that question is yes. CUNY officials have supplied statistics and proof, and today, survey after CUNY officials have supplied statistics and proof, and today, survey after survey of employers shows that the qualities they value are the qualities nurtured by the humanities. The second question I hear in today's title, however, goes something like this. Humanities may be acceptable for students in elite institutions, but isn't a major in philosophy or in English an unaffordable luxury for a student at CUNY? The answer is no. If the measure of a viable academic path is whether it leads to a job, you need only look at recent graduates of my own department and see what they're doing. They are thriving as oncology nurses, attorneys, teachers, visual artists, journalists, video game writers, novelists, and more. But to stop with that answer is to risk accepting the premise that working-class students, students of color and the poor, can aspire only to an instrumentalized education, an education whose value is measured entirely by its ability to lead to a job. The students who rushed up to me after class this week with a theory on the meaning of the Greek names in Shakespeare or to tell me how their whole experience of watching movies has changed because of our class on historicizing, these students are not approaching their education as a ticket to a job. They are thrilled by the possibilities of life opened up by the humanities, just as I was as a student. "Life is so big," Toni Morrison said when she spoke at Queens College. The humanities, as the subjects most explicitly dedicating to exploring life's potential, are not just viable for CUNY students, they are vital. In a culture that aggressively seeks to strip many of our students of their humanity, humanistic study is a powerful act of self-preservation. James Baldwin talked about the moment he first read a novel by Richard Wright. For the first time in his life, he said, opening the number one page, he said about the moment that he read that he felt affirmed in his existence. CUNY students affirm their individual and collective potential every time they grapple with a demanding novel or master a philosophical argument. We are in the midst of a revolution in the humanities, as the arts, history, literature, and philosophy are being remade by thinkers who demand a world safe for future humans and free of oppression. CUNY students, with their deep experience of struggle and the knowledge it engenders, are exactly the humanists we need. I am grateful to the Committee on Higher Education for giving us the chance to refute those who would narrow and instrumentalize the CUNY curriculum. CUNY students urgently, deeply, radically need the humanities, and the humanities need them. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bowen. Mr. Salas?
Thank you so much. Hello, everyone. My name is Remy Salas. I am a professor at the Department of Ethnic and Race Studies in CUNY Borough Manhattan Community College, better known as BMC. I am honored to address this committee hearing where I shall emphasize the profound significance of CUNY's academic offerings and their role in propelling individuals, including myself, out of poverty towards a better, brighter, and more promising future. In my capacity as an educator in my field and in the field of humanities, I have a profound appreciation for the pivotal role these programs play in shaping our students' journey from the classroom to the professional world. The humanities foster critical thinking, analytical skills, and profound sense of creativity. They empower students to explore the shared thread that binds humanity together while also highlighting the nuances that sets us apart. Moreover, the humanities offer a wealth of practical applications that enhance one's professional skills, skill sets, I'm sorry. Drawing from my professional experience as a former City Hall staffer, former City Council staffer, a former city agency staffer, serving in various policy roles, I can attest to the fact that humanities, that humanities education that I've gotten has played a pivotal role in my early career trajectory. My proficiency in writing home through humanities coursework greatly contributed to my professional advancement. And as a dedicated professor, I have had the privilege of witnessing numerous students discover their own strength and successfully applying them in academia as well as in the professional arena. A significant number of my former students have ventured into the sectors of tech as well as finance, where their global perspective and effective communication skills have set them apart. Our academic curriculum must cater to these aspirations, and the humanities are uniquely positioned to do so. The humanities department contributes to the holistic and well-rounded education that equips students with a multifaceted worldview and versatile skills. I extend my sincere gratitude to the Committee of Higher Education for affording us this invaluable opportunity to counteract any attempts to narrow the scope of the CUNY curriculum. The humanities are not only viable, but absolutely indispensable for CUNY students, who in turn are essential champions of the humanities. Together, we shall continue to uphold the profound importance of a diverse and a comprehensive education that empowers individuals to flourish both intellectually and professionally. Thank you.
Thank you. So I gather you all feel the importance of humanities. In some ways, it's under attack. And I'll ask a similar question I asked some of the other panels, which is, what are some of the steps you believe need to be taken in order to reinvest in the humanities and support the humanities?
I'll just say happy birthday to the council member as she was leaving. Happy birthday.
She—you can't see on the camera, whatever camera, but she was very pleased that you did that. She said, "Thank you very much," and she's very appreciative.
Great. Well, she's my councilperson.
Oh, good. You have a great one.
I took that liberty and a great councilperson. I think what needs to be done is more investment in CUNY overall. I mean, I think you framed the question rightly by saying, what needs to be done to invest in the humanities? In an institution where we are always under an austerity regime, where we always are scrambling, where we don't have enough, where there are not enough books in the libraries, where my students sometimes have to drag a desk from another room in order to be in the classroom because it's too full, where we don't have proper heating or air cooling in our rooms, where we don't have enough faculty to teach, all of that undermines everything we do across all subjects. But I think the humanities in some ways suffer more because they're not seen as needing a heavy infrastructure investment. So I think that in some ways, the general austerity at CUNY is visited very heavily on the humanities.
Are you describing the situation at CUNY? Or are you describing that story of students pulling their desks into your classroom as exclusive to the humanities, where other majors don't face those same sorts of challenges?
No, I'm not saying it's exclusive to the humanities, but what I'm saying is that in the context of overall scarcity, which CUNY has lived under for far too long, every discipline suffers. And I know the STEM subjects suffer in other ways. I know, for instance, that in some colleges, there aren't enough lab stations for students, and they have to look, oversee, you know, overlook somebody doing the experiment, and that's their version of doing the experiment. So it's not unique to the humanities, but I do feel, and I'd love to hear my colleagues on this, that it's felt especially in the humanities because it's often seen that that kind of investment isn't needed, and therefore, it's the last to get investment. We are the last to get investment. And I'll just say one more thing, that the continuing disinvestment, which I see as a, you know, a decades-long problem, but very acute right now, the continuing disinvestment in CUNY has played out in a lack of support for the part-time faculty who remain underpaid and for too few full-time faculty. And in an area so faculty-intensive as the humanities, whereas there's often so much of a bond made between the professor and the student, we feel that intensely. So those are a couple of the areas where I think that investment overall in CUNY would do a tremendous amount to enhance what we can do in the humanities.
If I could just add a couple of examples of how investment, deeper investment in CUNY and in the humanities would help. One is keeping our class sizes small so that we can have the kinds of intimate discussions and build close community with our students in humanities courses that can really stay with them and transform their lives and remind them what CUNY is a pathway to, which is the world. And the second impact is contingency of our faculty. 60 to 70% of our courses are taught by part-time faculty members. We have too few full-time faculty who come to CUNY and stay. We have many talented faculty who come and then leave because of the challenges of this institution, and they may have opportunities elsewhere. And what that makes very difficult to find is longitudinal—the longitudinal data that can be very effective to make arguments for additional funding down the road. I feel like we're constantly in moments of reorientation to the process for new faculty who are coming in. So the funding challenges are real and persistent, and they have very negative impacts on the teaching and learning that happens in our classrooms.
Okay, I want to thank this panel for your testimony and for answering the committee's questions. I will call the next panel. I'm going to apologize to two people, one on pronunciation and two on—I'm not sure I can read the last letter in it, but Mr. Hugo Fernandez. Alan.
Ahah.
Ahah, okay. And Sarah.
Sarah Chin.
Chin. Thank you. I had a student who spelled—Mr. Ahah, I had a student who spelled her first name the same as your last name, but her name was Asia. So I didn't want to mispronounce it. Okay. You can steal whatever—you can steal whatever. Okay, Ms. Chin, you can begin. And just again, before you speak, you can make sure you state your name for the record.
Okay. My name is Sarah Chin, and I'm a professor in and former chairperson of the English Department at Hunter College. Thank you. My esteemed colleagues have been or will be talking about the various kinds of crucial work that the humanities do for our students. Prepare them for a career that will almost inevitably require the skills that the humanities equip them with, give them access to the almost limitless array of arts and media venues and job opportunities the city provides, build their capacities for qualities that are hard to quantify, such as empathy, problem-solving, analysis, and self-expression. These are all central arguments for the importance of the humanities, and I share their enthusiasm and advocacy. I'd like to take a slightly different tack in my own comments, however. I want to talk about class, equity, and joy. College is probably the last, maybe even the only place, in which our students get to choose to do what inspires them. Throughout their school years, K to 12, they've been subjected to standardized tests, citywide curricula, the influence of peers, and of course, the pressure to get into a college that they can afford and that meets their needs. Once they leave college and embark on a career, their lives will be determined by the dictates of the marketplace. The decisions they make will be shaped and set by managers, bosses, clients, and the like, not to mention their needs to pay rent, support a family, and let's hope, thrive, whether in New York or elsewhere. College is a brief respite in which students could, and I would argue should, have the space to experiment, to stretch themselves, to challenge their assumptions, to enter into other ways of thinking and seeing. Equally importantly, as Professor Bowen mentioned, why should our students be denied access to those intellectual goods that their more privileged counterparts take for granted? After attending New York City public schools, my own children chose liberal arts colleges because they recognized that being immersed in literature, history, languages, art and art history, and the like was essential to a meaningful education. How much more crucial is access to the humanities for our students, the children not of college professors, but of working people, immigrants documented and undocumented, families of color, who too often are told, both explicitly and implicitly, that they should limit themselves intellectually, focus on practicalities, and not for a moment feel like they are entitled to the same education as those kids at NYU or Columbia? To my mind, offering a rich, full, multi-layered humanities curriculum to CUNY students is ultimately a question of equity. Elite institutions are not debating the value of the humanities. They take for granted that their students need, deserve, and want a broad and deep education. The students we all teach are no different. They are hungry for more, more knowledge, more context, more novels and poems and essays and plays by writers they would never have encountered otherwise, more joy. In the classes I teach, I see not just their work, but their pleasure in intellectual engagement with new narratives and new ideas. How can we imagine denying them that gift?
Thank you. Mr. Ahah? Can you make sure the mic runs on? Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you, colleagues. Saludos. My name is Alan Ahah, and I'm professor in chair in the Historic Department of Puerto Rican and Latino or Latinx Studies of Brooklyn College CUNY. I also co-direct with Professor Theo Harris, Professor Enton, the Mellon Transfer Student Research Program in the Humanities. My department was created during the student-led protest waves and context of ethnic revival during the late '60s and early '70s. The program I co-direct was more recently, but they both respectively were born out of the dire curricular needs to serve marginalized and underserved communities at CUNY, and they operate within the same struggle that brings us here today. So thank you for this hearing. I could begin this testimony by highlighting some of the concerning research by the Academy of Arts and Sciences of the federal to state and local disinvestment in the humanities. All the while, I'm just cut to the chase, STEM seems to be thriving. I could also reference the moral conundrum situated in labor market evidence, part of my expertise, that as we push college students, primarily working class, into STEM fields and create infrastructures out of them across higher education, that the supply of those jobs in those fields doesn't match the supposed demand into that credentialing. Those numbers speak for themselves. I could also reference some of what my colleagues have witnessed, experienced at CUNY. Some of this deference means that departments and programs in humanities, social sciences, you mentioned area studies, ethnic studies, thank you for that, consistently have to fight from petition to protest to grants, right? For equitable resource-level treatment. As some of us say at CUNY, cada día es una lucha. Every day is a struggle. But I'm going to ask the council and ourselves here to think, to do exactly what the humanities teach us to do on a daily basis. This thinking, which I heard before and here, terrific, requires us to subvert a racist narrative that CUNY students are unworthy, especially as you underscored, of a full education that centers, not sidelines, the arts, the humanities, the area studies, and the social sciences. I'm going to ask ourselves as well why elite colleges across the country, they're not even go there, even as they dominate in STEM, because they understand that these disciplines teach us how to think, to analyze, to lead, to create. I'm going to ask us to think why we think CUNY students deserve less, and if Harvard or Columbia or Yale, NYU are the only ones who deserve small classes or liberal arts education writ large. I'm going to ask you also to center our CUNY grads when we think about how we create policy. Lisa, who's now at Columbia getting her PhD. Derek, who writes for the New York Times. Raul and Ana Pony, who teach ESL in the public school system, what my department helps create, helps do. Vanessa, who's went on to the New School and now works at Aspida and at Ajuke-Lintra, lecture at CUNY, and Dominic, who is now at UMass, and Jamila, who works at the ACLU. I'm going to ask you to center them in your thinking and our policy. An inclusive call of education needs not to come at the cost of, but center the humanities, the social sciences, the arts, and God forbid, the ethnic and area studies. Areas of studies, as which you all know, are under attack across the country through direct to indirect policy erasure. Lastly, CUNY students are not only our city's workers, but they are our citizens, our thinkers, our readers, and writers, and deserve to have the creative and critical capacities and nerves. CUNY is the thinking class. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Fernandez?
My name is Hugo Fernandez. I'm a professor of fine art photography at LaGuardia Community College. The humanities saved my life. Like many of our students, I grew up with socioeconomic struggles, the son of a single parent, but I was never denied the humanities. My mother was an immigrant and knew nothing about this country, so she bought me an encyclopedia so I could look things up. She always found a good school on the edge of a lousy neighborhood. I grew up in New York, Boston, and South Florida, and somehow I found myself in gifted programs until high school, when peer pressure and recreational drug use ended my career in mathematics. I used art as a way to transition into higher education, and though I had no interest in the commercial arts practice, I the commercial arts practice, I found other things to study, like journalism and broadcasting, and eventually, photography, to hold my interests. I took my own gap year of sorts after my associates and saw the American West, and then went back and got my bachelor's, adding creative writing, poetry, British literature, the history of art to my toolbox, and eventually received a BFA in fine art photography, along with a minor in British literature and art history. I studied abroad, participating in archaeological dig in South America, and became involved in political aspects of the arts communities in the United States. But eventually, I got my master's in fine art photography at the Yale School of Art. From there, I went to LaGuardia Community College, where I have taught for 30 years, beginning in the photography program and branching out into art appreciation. I once had the notion that I had no business teaching poor kids how to be artists, that they couldn't take care of themselves. Finally, a colleague told me, even poor kids have a right to be artists. I spend most of my days trying to instill the notion that not only is art part of everyday life, but that we all have a stake in determining which is valuable and needs support. So you see, if we are ever to make it out of our humble beginnings and to get to the place that we want to be, the humanities are going to take us there. The leaders of this country tend to be English majors and liberal arts students. They can communicate, they can think critically, because they have the repository of all human aspiration within their grasp and use it to develop new ways of doing and thinking. We are long past the Industrial Revolution, smack dab in the information age, and while I have no interest in talking someone out of a career with a blue collar or in a laboratory, I can tell you now, those studies will only take them so far, and if they want to achieve their greatest self, they're going to have to sit in some approximation of my Intro to Art course. The average CUNY student graduates and finds themselves in a job, bringing in $20,000 a year less than somebody with the same degree from another institution. Why? Well, to be a supervisor, you have to be able to think critically and communicate. If you don't have those skills which you learned in the humanities, you will always work for somebody else and make less. $20,000 a year over the course of the average person's working lifespan is a million dollars. Are you going to deny that of students in public education, higher ed in New York City? Thank you.
Thank you. I've asked the question of each panel, so I want to hear if you have any additional answers, and if not, that's okay, but I heard about investments, research opportunities, internships, issues with financial aid, data. Besides those categories, are there any other steps that you believe should be taken in order to uplift the humanities at CUNY?
I think that there is very poor PR for the humanities, certainly nationally, but also in CUNY. I mean, I think these amazing programs that the Teagle Foundation has sponsored are fantastic, but CUNY should be trumpeting them constantly, and yet, I know about them only because of my own personal interests. I think, I mean, certainly at Hunter, the humanities get very little love, so even though many of our faculty win national prizes, edit national journals, that's not, that does not get the same kind of announcement, you know, sort of on these big screens, as let's say, someone who wins a grant, a government grant. So I think, to a certain extent, given how much noise is out there in the world, the humanities definitely fall under the radar, and they have to be promoted in an active way by our administrators.
I don't know if you can tell I'm smiling, because I think this was the first hearing since I became chair of this committee, that I didn't ask the question about how CUNY is promoting themselves, because what you said is absolutely true, not just in the humanities, but in a lot of areas, community, CUNY is doing incredible work, and, you know, you search on Google, and there are never the first advertisement you see, they're never on the Facebook ads, and they say, "Well, we have a couple of ads on the train," and that's, and that's kind of about it. So I couldn't agree with you more that the PR at CUNY is severely, severely lacking.
I think they're working on that.
They need some great artists to do the proofs for them.
Look, I would add to that. I'm grateful for the fact that I co-direct a program that is funded by the Mellon Foundation, but that money's going to run out. And while I'm thankful, we're thankful for that, that should be ingrained into the budget, the operational budget of every single college. And the program actually emulates what is largely needed at large. You asked a question, what could, what could you do, what could the city council do? I think we need a new deal for CUNY. Look, there's a narrative that needs, that it's often unspoken, but it's, it's true. Under the guise of fiscal austerity, when CUNY became more diverse in the 1970s, all of a sudden, they said, "There's a fiscal crisis," and students were charged tuition, right? So that was not by accident, that was by design. So what needs to happen is that there's a bill, I believe Senator Gennardis is one of the cosponsors of it, and so if there could be upward pressure to the state level, we would eliminate a huge bureaucratic apparatus regarding, if we had a new deal which calls for tuition for CUNY again. That would eliminate all of these barriers that you heard today with regards to financial aid, it'll actually save costs and put money into students' pockets. It's a win-win. So that's, you know, you ask me, and the other thing, this is my, part of my scholarly expertise, I'm going to throw it in there, we need a citywide job guarantee. We've been calling for that at the federal level, but we could actually do that, whereas if a person doesn't get a job in the labor market at large, that the government responds. In fact, that began with FDR, and they were talks about it in this room in the 1940s. So, we can talk after about that, but those are some of the policy-level ideas that I would, I would have.
I'm always down for a good history lesson, although I would note that this committee last year did pass a resolution supporting the new deal for CUNY at the state level. So we are certainly supportive of the new deal for CUNY, not just, it's not just me saying it, this is something that came out of this committee and was voted on by the council. So we certainly support the new deal for CUNY.
I'm, as a teacher, I'm going to give you some homework. You might benefit from reading the writings of Ken Robinson, the late Ken Robinson, and Malcolm Gladwell's Why I Hate the Ivy League. Those are two good things that can kind of get you into the headset, because some believe that we need a revolution in higher education, and that the dominance of the left-brain kind of thinking disciplines has gone on too long. There's a lack of creativity, or the ability to think creatively on the part of our students, and that's what, you know, the humanities can, can give them. But we really just need to get, give them the freedom, like, you know, kids who come from money get, which is to find your, find their way, find their, find, you know, find their path, by offering them the option of studying whatever they want, you know, follow their nose. I mean, I was afforded that because, you know, I was a mama's boy and I lived at home. I had, I had to pay for school, but I didn't have to pay for, you know, the roof over my head or, or meals, and that was the greatest gift my mother ever gave me. Those ten, 13 years for a six-year degree. And, you know, that is weird, you know, this notion that you have to know what you're going to do, and, and the fact that, you know, that English and mathematics and science are mandated, but the humanities is an elective, that, that kind of thinking has to go away. We need to put, there needs to be kind of an even playing field in higher education and in the, in the public sector, in public education. So it's, we really need a revolution, and it would be great to have the support of the legislature to do that.
Thank you so much for your testimony today. Ms. Kornhauser, when you're ready, you may begin, and please state your name for the record.
Thank you. My name is Anne Kornhauser. I'm chair of the History Department at City College, CUNY. I should add that these comments, however, reflect my own views, I'm not here in an official capacity for in the college. So I felt it necessary to take the time to make sure that the title of this hearing remains a statement and not a question. The humanities are a viable academic path for CUNY students, and indeed, for all students, and they will always be so as long as humanities departments exist, and that existential question is, is real, and that goes back to funding and resources, and I can answer more specific questions about that later if you'd like. But since we're short on time, I'll just make a few quick points. The first is, college is not only, in my view, about preparing students for a job, it is about preparing students for a full and rewarding life. This holds doubly true for CUNY students who likely have not had the opportunities of some of the other college students in the United States. The word viable in the title of this hearing connotes practicality and ultimately employability. I understand that we need to keep the connection between higher education and job prospects in mind, but let's keep quality of life and life skills in mind as well. Let's not deny our students the opportunity for a rich and rewarding life beyond their job. I had a student, for example, who thanked me, not only for my academic guidance, but for providing a role model for women in leadership positions and intellectuals. Where she came from, the country she came from, she explained, this was not so common, and she'd been taught to keep her expectations low, not just about the job she could have, but even what life she could have. Secondly, I would say that CUNY students want to study the humanities. Speaking for my own discipline of history, throughout CUNY, we have not seen the dramatic decline in majors typical of many other colleges and universities in recent years. I think one reason has to be that CUNY students are broad-minded and interested in making the world a better place in a variety of ways. I believe this is one, this is true of other humanities disciplines such as literature and philosophy as well. Third, I'd like to say that CUNY should lead by thinking creatively about how to do more with less, and that the city council and other legislative bodies should fund us as much as they can, but help us in, in, you know, to, to be imaginative and creative in, in using our, the resources we do have. Let's not go down the path of eliminating smaller majors, for example. Let's find a way to continue to provide opportunities for our uniquely diverse student body that they cannot get elsewhere. Finally, I will address jobs, because everybody wants to know that these days. One of the things that our department has done successfully, at least in recent years, is reproduce ourselves, reproduce the humanities, which I haven't heard come up so much today. So, for example, we have three recent graduates, last 10 years, because it takes a while to get a PhD, in our History Department, who now are teaching at CUNY colleges, including in our own department. They went off to Yale, Princeton, and Brown, and came back and got jobs at City College, John Jay, and Queens, and I'm very, I'm very proud of that fact. Thank you for your time today.
Thank you.
My name is Dean Ringel, and it's an honor and a pleasure to be here today. Although I've spent more than a decade teaching as an adjunct assistant professor at John Jay College, with Mr. Paulino next to me, I've spent more than four decades before that in the business and legal world, and it's my experience in that world that I want to emphasize in affirming the value of humanities as a viable academic path for CUNY students. Now, I speak, of course, in a personal capacity, but based on my experience in the private sector, as well as my more recent experience teaching at CUNY, the humanities are not only a viable academic path for CUNY students, study of the humanities also provides a clear and direct path to career success. Such studies also foster the kind of thoughtful civic virtue our city and country so need. You referred to that earlier, Mr. Chairman, and I think that's an important aspect that needs to be emphasized in the value of the community, of the humanities, not just in helping people have a viable career path, but also in functioning well as citizens in our country. Now, I've been an adjunct assistant professor in the History Department at John Jay since 2012, but for more than 40 years before that, I was a litigator, and for most of those years, a partner at a major New York law firm, where I specialized in representing the press in constitutional issues. I had the great good fortune to represent, among other entities, the New York Times, NBC News, Time Magazine, and Inside Edition. I hired, trained, and mentored young law students and lawyers. I observed that law students and lawyers who had been exposed to the humanities, history, literature, music, philosophy, were best able to think through the issues with which we dealt, to offer novel solutions to difficult problems, and able to express themselves orally and in writing with a confidence and a skill that students who had focused on job readiness courses simply couldn't do. Now, many of our students, whether products, as I am, of our New York City public schools or other systems, come to college thinking it is about memorizing a bunch of information, regurgitating that information on an exam, and ultimately gaining a diploma to satisfy a prospective employer's checklist. Now, there is value in that, but it grossly undervalues what a college education can and should provide. Students seek a college degree, at least in part, in pursuit of white-collar jobs. They should recognize that success in such jobs requires the ability to solve problems, to think abstractly, and sometimes outside of the box, to read difficult materials with understanding, to write clearly. The humanities prepare students to do this by requiring them to grapple with the great issues the thinkers and artists of our world have grappled with over the centuries. The highest compliment that I have ever received in my teaching career was paid me by a student after a humanities and justice course I taught. "This is the first time a class made me think," he said. That is indeed what courses in the humanities do, and those courses provide valuable training in what it takes to succeed in careers, and in life, and in functioning as a citizen of our city, our state, and our country. We should not deprive CUNY students of that in a narrow focus on providing job readiness courses. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Paulino?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and the committee, for the opportunity to offer my testimony. Hello, my name is Edward Paulino, and this feels surreal to me, because I grew up a stone's throw away in the Alfred E. Smith Public Housing Projects. I am the son of immigrant parents from the Dominican Republic, and I am also historian in the Global History Department at John Jay College, an associate professor, a proudly Hispanic-serving institution. In the last two decades, I have taught several thousand amazing CUNY students, from first year transfer students to seniors. I have taught courses from globalization and inequality to historiography. But over the years, it is my signature course, The History of Genocide, that has had the most profound intellectual and emotional effect on my students. Students learn that, as my friend and scholar Adam Jones writes, "As humans, quote, 'Genocide is to study our historical inheritance, and it brings you into contact with some of the most interesting and exciting debates in the social sciences and humanities,' end quote. Courses like these reveal that the humanities is more relevant, and through the reading and analysis of texts, is transformative in the lives of students." Listen to one of my recent students emailed me, quote, "I am, I'm writing to express how much I loved learning from your course this past spring. I spent the majority of my life in Nigeria, so I never..." I spent the majority of my life in Nigeria, so I never got the opportunity to fully learn the dark histories of the different countries we studied in this class. However, through your course, I was able to learn more about the world's world history and even discover things about my country that I didn't know before. The final essay assignment led me to have a deep and meaningful conversation with my grandmother. Through our talk, I discovered so much new information that made me admire her strength and bravery more than I already do. I left your class different from the person I was when I started, and it made me realize how much I loved history." As human beings, we don't love or communicate daily in equations. E equals mc squared, f of x equals zero over zero, Lopitau's rule. We love in words, touch, feel, and in breath. Despite DNA cloning and Mars rover missions, the humanities remains a viable academic path to fulfilling careers for CUNY students. From teaching, law school, archives, and NGOs, being trained in the humanities will remain an important tool more than ever in the 21st century. For example, I am currently working on creating a pipeline for John Jay College students to enter the U.S. Foreign Service at a time when the State Department has acknowledged the lack of racial and ethnic diversity in the U.S. Diplomatic Corps. Humanities-trained John Jay and CUNY students are in the best position to use their training in history in the past, in knowing what worked, what didn't, what the foundations and thinking and creations of our societies and ways of being are, to create new narratives and contribute to American society as self-aware, knowledgeable, complex, interesting, and empathetic citizens, not robots. STEM is important, don't get me wrong. My engineer friend reminded me that if the bridge falls, what then? But what good is a bridge if there is nothing, no people, no culture, no art, no music, to connect? As Jane Jacobs could have said to Robert Moses, you know, a highway does not make a city. I want to leave you with this. In the 1997 film Contact, Jodie Foster plays a search for extraterrestrial intelligence as a scientist. As she comes out of a wormhole in deep space, she is confronted by overwhelming, beautifully multicultural, multi-colored celestial lights, stars, planets, and galaxies. And in response to the question, "What do you see?", she says, "You should have sent a poet." Thank you.
Thank, I would like to thank this panel for their testimony. Our next panel will be on Zoom. Panel number five is Lenique Peddaway, Gail Lewis, Rosette Ruth Reisman Aguilar, and John Verzani.
Hi, I'm Lenique Peddaway, and I recently graduated from John Jay College in June 2023 with a degree, an English major. So I feel very attached to the humanities. I took a humanities and action course when I was in the fall, and I found it was very helpful because it taught me a lot of critical thinking skills that on top of my English major I was enhancing. And it allowed me to find a problem that I knew was there but wasn't really widely known and isn't as researched about. My particular research project for that class was the struggles that Black teenage girls face when it comes to high school. They have a lot of failure rates, which I found is very different narratively compared to the way people kind of like to discuss Black teenagers and teenage girls and how they're succeeding or doing super well, but it's always been confined to the stereotypes that are associated with them. And I found that while there's not much of a solution because there's so many problems that kind of led to their failure rates, the class taught me to focus on history, on how law and legal justice systems kind of attack and, sorry, don't help with the problem as well as just general psychology, the stereotypes and tropes that are very associated with Black teenagers and Black women generally that lead to their failure rates. And I think if I didn't take that class, I would have probably been a little stuck in thinking about what I could do with my major, and I'm really glad I took it. I'm really glad for the humanities because it allowed me to explore so many different avenues, and I could bridge them all together. They're not separate. I know there's this idea that law and history don't have to be together, but they absolutely do. So many of what, so much of what we learn is just completely interconnected. And I'm just pro humanities, fall for it. Everyone should learn it, and thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations on graduating. All right, Gail Lewis?
Hi, good afternoon, everyone.
Good afternoon.
I'm Gail Lewis for the record, and good afternoon to the Committee on Higher Education. The study of the humanities has traditionally been an academic endeavor reserved for the affluent, but as you know, not here at CUNY. In our reality, CUNY makes the study of humanities a viable, inclusive path for students. I'm a lecturer here at Queensborough Community College CUNY in the Department of Communication, Theater, and Media Production, and I'm also a proud CUNY grad. Go Baruch Bearcats! Our student population here at QCC, as it is CUNY-wide, spans age, culture, and of course, background. And when it comes to the study of the humanities here at Queensborough Community College, we hold accreditation by the National Association of Schools of Theater, which is NAST, accreditation from the National Association of Schools of Arts and Design, and we are accredited by the National Association of Schools of Dance. So lots of accreditation in the humanities right here at QCC. I've read the articles about the decline in the number of students seeking a major in the humanities. Robert Townsend, co-director of the American Academy of Arts and Sciences Humanities Indicators Project, states that humanities, as we stated before, studies enrollments have declined by 17% in the past 10 years. But in my class, the reality is a little bit different. I see students who are excited by the possibilities that the humanities present. Students are challenged in communication and in media production. They express their own reality through their productions. They tell their own stories. They immerse themselves in our accredited theater program, production after production. They build sets. They come daily and nightly to get it done. Students in our communication classes, public speaking, interpersonal communication, intercultural communication, communication in a professional setting, they are excited about the possibilities of a major or a minor in communication. Our theater, we, also in my department, Communication, Theater, and Media Production, we host a soft skills workshop every semester, and it is standing room only of students across the disciplines. The demand for the humanities here on our campus is huge. Instead of redistributing funding away from the humanities, let's double down. Let's help ensure our humanities grads get well-paying jobs. Let's invest in more public-private internship programs to funnel our students and our grads back into New York City's best and brightest cultural, musical, and theater programs. Let's promote the humanities. And lastly, I guess to paraphrase a great humanities thinker, Justin Timberlake, "Let's bring sexy back to the study of humanities across CUNY." Thanks again for letting me speak today.
Thank you very much, Gail. Our next speaker, anytime someone quotes Justin Timberlake as a humanities person is going to put a smile on their face. The next speaker is Rosette Ruth Reisman Aguilar.
Yes, hi. Good afternoon, everybody.
Hi.
Thank you. Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak on this platform. I'm going to speak more from the heart and a little less scripted. I think I serve myself as proof to the value of the humanities department here at CUNY. I myself, and obviously, I am an alumni, graduated from CUNY with three different degrees in various areas, an undergraduate degree in Communication Arts, Sciences, and Disorders, a doctoral degree in Audiology, as well as my MBA at Baruch. And I think, and now I'm actually here as a full-time doctoral lecturer in the CUNY Department for Audiology. And not only are we probably the smallest major within the humanities department, but I think I'm so surprised that this is even up for the debate, for debate in terms of the value that humanities brings to society, to the community at large, how much the human connection is so important in day-to-day life. What we do as audiologists, which are ultimately clinicians that diagnose and rehabilitate hearing imbalance disorders, is so essential to all communities, all cultures, all throughout the age range from newborns up to our seniors department. I'm actually going to be presenting for New York City on the falls prevention and how hearing balance, audiology, and of course, the humanities and the human connection is so important in preventing falls in our senior population, which really causes a lot of risks in their, in their overall health. So to me, I think part of the issue is some of everyone, some of the things that have been discussed is the lack of PR and awareness of what the humanities can bring to our community and what the opportunities are after graduation for the students, which is why I kind of came back to teaching, having gone throughout the country to different universities and observing their audiology departments and what they have to serve, or what they have to offer to their students and really seeing some of the, I guess, weaknesses of the CUNY, of the CUNY system in terms of what we, and the disservices that we're doing to our students by cutting back funding and not offering them the opportunity to really excel like in those universities that do have the funding and the support in their environment. Because I think our platform as New York City providers, ultimately, a lot of our students go on to support the New York City community and patients within New York City.
Time has expired. Thank you.
It's really ultimately-
Can you finish your last thought?
Yep, so that's really the, ultimately, I would, I would think that, you know, we should, as we said, double down on the investment in terms of what we can offer to CUNY students because we are ultimately the ones serving the community at large.
Thank you so much for your testimony. And last on this panel is John Verzani.
Hi, thank you for having me. I'm John Verzani, Professor of Mathematics at the College of Staten Island and current Chair of CUNY's University Faculty Senate. For the past 55 years, the University Faculty Senate has represented CUNY's faculty in front of the Board and Central Administration on Academic Matters. Today's topic is timely and falls on many nationally reported stories. For example, the question of the state of the humanities for the elite colleges was looked at in last spring's provocatively titled New Yorker piece, "The End of the English Major." While that story was a nuanced piece looking at shifting enrollments and student preferences, many national stories have apparent political motivation, the most noteworthy examples being the hostile takeover of the humanities-friendly New College of Florida by a governor following a playbook drawn up by fellows at the Manhattan Institute, and the passing of SB 17 in Texas radically restricting efforts to cultivate diversity, equity, and inclusion at its public institutions of higher ed. Part of national efforts driven by the Heritage Foundation, the American Enterprise Institute, and the Woodson Center, as recently detailed in a Chronicle of Higher Education article. And these have had effect. For example, in West Virginia, where there's significant budget issues, the university announced a significant cost-saving, majors targeting humanities students and faculty. I believe that these ideas of the humanities weren't powerful, they wouldn't be under assault by well-funded nationally organized groups. And we see this locally. The New York Post belieffully runs articles at CUNY's expense, even when CUNY is at best tangentially involved. The only apparent reason being to weaken the reputation of the greatest engine of social mobility in the region. And these efforts are working, if not solely with half the electorate. Yesterday's New York Times article titled "Americans Are Losing Faith in the Value of College" highlighted how the Republican view that college has a negative effect has risen from 37% to 58% between years of 2015 and 2017. Now, are the humanities viable at CUNY, which is the question of the day? Looking at declared major data for BA students at CUNY, there has been a decline in humanities-related majors since between 2018 and 2022. English is down 56% from what it was, history 85%, philosophy 72%, and Spanish 87%. Does this signal an end? Well, the declines to some extent follow losses in enrollment, which are off 80% as of 2018. However, such enrollment losses seem to have been stemmed, many were driven by the pandemic, and we've had strong rebounds this fall, especially for our community colleges and our comprehensive colleges. Perhaps instead, these shifts reflect the fruits of efforts by the City Council and the Mayor's Office to open up computer science gateways, which are up 36% over that five-year span. More likely, the declines are the result of natural diversification and specialization and not a testament to the value and viability of the humanities. While English numbers have fallen off, percentage amount is nearly identical to criminal justice and-
Time expired. Thank you.
Both with three times the declared students. I'll stop there, but I can-
Thank you so much for your testimony today. And our last panel? Addie Malinowski. I'll read the three names. Addie Malinowski, Laura Washington, Maura E. McCrae, and we'll start with Addie Malinowski.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
I'm just going to keep this really short because I actually have to be in class in a minute. I am a student at the CUNY Graduate Center in English, and I also teach first-year writing, which is a general education requirement in college writing to freshman students at Brooklyn College. I'm also a product of public education and public universities from the great state of Michigan, and I have a master's in creative writing. I'm a poet also. So to educate the whole people of the city of New York, that's the slogan of CUNY. CUNY students, especially those who are poor, Black and Brown, New Yorkers, and this is just echoing what a lot of my colleagues have said today, deserve the right and the freedom to explore the humanities in their education and not just be put on a pipeline to become workers in a mediocre economy. For example, students should have the funding to study somebody like Audre Lorde, the great Black feminist poet and essayist who studied and taught at Hunter College. They should be able to be afforded this right to study the humanities and get a good job after graduating, which would mean addressing larger economic problems we face, making good on the promise of economic justice, which would mean instituting something like a citywide jobs guarantee. We don't want to deny students at the nation's largest public urban university, the great City University of New York, the kind of liberal arts education their predominantly white and wealthy peers at the city's private universities receive. New Yorkers of all stripes have to write, have the right to learn about their own unique histories and should not be the target of politicized attacks on the humanities. I believe we should fund CUNY again like it was funded for all New Yorkers during the period of open admissions between the years 1970 and 1976, when tuition was imposed. And we should make good on the promise to educate the whole people of the city of New York. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Addie. Laura Washington?
Hey, good afternoon, Chairman Dinowitz and members of the Committee on Higher Education. My name is Laura Washington. I'm the Chief Communications Officer and Vice President for Strategic Partnerships here at the New York Historical Society, and I'm honored to testify today about the humanities as an academic and career path for CUNY students. I didn't say pipeline. At the New York Historical Society, the humanities is at the heart of everything we do. For decades, our museum and library have been at the forefront of presenting exhibitions that reexamine U.S. history and include the perspective of historically underrepresented groups. and include the perspective of historically underrepresented groups. But we, we do more than exhibitions. We're also creating pathways for students interested in the humanities, which is to say, students who are interested in investigating the forces that shape the world that we live in. One way we do this is through our groundbreaking Master of Arts in Museum Studies program, which the New York Historical Society created in 2019 in partnership with CUNY's School of Professional Studies. This coming November will mark the fourth anniversary of the MAN Museum Studies Program. And this program, it serves a dual purpose. First, it equips students with the knowledge, skills, and preparation necessary for a career in professional museum practice. And secondly, it addresses the need for a diverse museum workforce that reflects an increasingly diverse museum-going public. We also have the Presidential Teaching Scholars Summer Institute, where our students enrich the museum interpretation and scholarly voices. And we also offer, or each student is required to work on a capstone project, which gives them practical experience and networking opportunities. Our graduates have gone on to work at institutions like the American Museum of Natural History across the street, the Intrepid Sea Air and Space Museum, MoMA, and the New York Historical Society. So they are getting great work, and they're putting those humanities-inspired degrees to work. In conclusion, the humanities are vital for fostering critical thinking, as you've heard over and over again today, as well as cultural awareness. And our joint program with CUNY actively helps diversify the cultural workforce. So by supporting programs like ours, the city invests in the next generation of cultural leaders and ensures that the humanities continue to enrich and transform lives. So thank you so much for your time today.
Thank you so much, Ms. Washington. And last on this panel is Maura E. McRite. Okay, is there anyone else on Zoom who has not been recognized but would like to testify? Please use the raise hand function. I would like to thank everyone who testified today. Everyone who was watching the hearing, came to the hearing to participate in this critically important hearing about humanities at our colleges. This hearing is adjourned.